All right, good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. And may I have a motion to open our full meeting? Second, second. Roll call, please. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukra?
Yes.
Ms. Cudera?
Yes.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Moving to the consent agenda for the approval of minutes of November 7th, 2023. And we do not have any payroll and warrants, so please disregard that. Everything listed in the consent agenda was distributed in advance of the meeting, with the exception of the payroll and warrants, because there are none. Does anyone have any requests for anything to be removed from the consent agenda or discussed or need to vote separately? John? Ron, are you okay?
I am good.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Roll call, please. Ms. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukra?
Yes.
Ms. Cudera?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Do we have anyone for delegation?
No.
Moving to old business, revised school committee norms and protocols. On 11/28/23, Dr. Bailey shared the revised version of the school committee protocols for our review. Mr. Hood's suggestions were added. Ron, did you get that?
I did.
All right. Does anyone have anything to add? If not, can I have a motion to approve the amended Acushnet School Committee protocols? Can I make a motion? Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukra?
Yes.
Ms. Cudera?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to new business, superintendent's report, Dr. Bailey.
All right, thank you so much. And happy holidays to everyone. You got your little goodies. No, thank you. And I just wanted to make note tonight that we are starting to use board docs. This is a slow rollout tonight. But starting in January, it will be the full-on rollout. So just be patient, because Kathy is... she's doing the dropdown menus as far as... and it would be really helpful if the chairperson could repeat who you're selecting as... who's making the motion, who's seconding. If you just repeat it.
Sure.
Because sometimes people do it at the same time.
Okay.
So if the chair could just say who, that would be helpful. But I'm so happy tonight, because first up, we have quite a large crowd here tonight.
I'm excited.
And I think it's because we have our elementary students. We've got a grade four ambassador presentation. And as you remember, last month, we have our ambassadors from the Ford Middle School. So today, we have the elementary school students. And we're very pleased to have them with us tonight. So if I could have Mrs. Chesney do the introductions here. And we're looking forward to see what they have to say.
Thank you so much, School Committee, for having us tonight. We have been... this is our second year to have the ambassadors over at AES. It's a fourth-grade program that is run by the school adjustment counselors. And so right now, it's Nicole Power, who has been their advisor. And I just want to introduce you and let them really say what the ambassador program is about. So we have... and when I call your name, I just want you to come forward and wave, okay? Dixon Olivera, Isabella Griffin, Haley Martins, Gabriela Lekka, Sophia Faria, Brooke Witcher, Quentin Rudolph, and Hunter Daveney. Do you want to add? Patrick, you know I have issues with this. Okay. All right, there we go. Okay. So here is the crew. What... we meet... well, they meet once a week, but I'm going to let them talk about that. We're starting with Sophia and Dixon. How do you come forward? That's their meeting place.
Um, so to become an ambassador...
So we're just going to make sure that you project your voice and speak right into the microphone. You have to kind of go really close, so everybody can hear, okay?
So to become an ambassador, you have to get your work done in class and listen.
You have to get stud... you have to get stuff done and follow instructions.
You have to be an example of the character trait of the month.
And you have to be teacher-dominated.
And ambassadors will change every trimester.
Okay, thank you. So now go ahead, hand me your book.
Just lower that microphone, there you go.
We... we meet once a week per semester, plan activities to help out the school. We make decisions about spirit days, brainstorm ideas for the school, plan and help set up Mix It Up Day, collect and count coins for kids.
Do you want to explain what Mix It Up Day was? Yeah, go ahead and tell them about it.
It... Mix It Up Day is like... it's kind of like...
At lunch, right?
It's at like... at lunch, we have like different colored tables. And you... and we have different cards. And you pick a card. And someone gives you a card. And that's where you sit at the table.
So you don't sit where you normally sit every day. You sit with different friends.
Exactly.
Very nice.
So I got to visit and read to one of the pre-K classes. And it was really fun to read them stories, like Grumpy Monkey. I like showing the kids how to use new words, like storybook. I think it was really good for them to have a role model of a good reading in the classroom. And then added... and an added bonus is I got to read to my brother. I hope future ambassadors have a greater experience like I do.
We also like have to like show them pictures and make sure that they understand what Jipan is describing.
As student ambassadors, this year, we cut out pieces of paper to make a kindness tree. The students at our school would do an act of kindness and write on the leaves of the tree on what act of kindness they did. I enjoyed being a student ambassador this year and representing my class. Our these letters basically sum up all the events that we do in class and put them all into one little letter and it's mailed out to all of us. And it makes us able to show everybody, like our families, our family and friends. And they get to share with their friends, too.
So it was clickable, but of course, on technology, you have issues there. So there was a wait. So you guys could... here it is. It also is going to be in our next communication for our parent smore. So hopefully, people who might be listening and also the school committee might have a chance to check that out, because they wrote all of that text themselves, put in the pictures. Plus, they also prepared this slideshow for you all today. So we are really proud of them. They've been working really hard. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions?
I don't think the crowd can see them. So if they come across over here and maybe take a bow for all their hard work, we'll want to picture them.
It's just your parents, guys.
Hard work, guys. What are we going to do?
We're going to take a picture. We got lots of guys.
Picture time.
Sorry, we're on your mouth.
Goodness gracious.
I'm going to go with you. All crisp, fresh applesauce right in the front? Sorry. So everyone look at that camera. Which one? Oh, that one. Yes.
Say Wildcats.
Wildcats.
Thank you, everyone. Take a bow, guys.
That was very, very nice. And I will be meeting with the student ambassadors from the elementary school as I meet with all of the grade levels. But I always start with the ambassadors, because their input and their voice into school matters is very important to me. And I have to say, it's not easy to get up at a school committee meeting and speak. But I thought you all did a very, very nice job. I'm very proud of you. I'm sure your parents who are here tonight, your grownups, very proud of you. So thank you again so much for coming out. You're welcome to stay for this lovely business meeting, but you don't have to. I'm sure that you want to hear about the better things to do. But I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight for our meeting and showing support to the students, because what they're doing in the school, as you can see from the presentation tonight, it's a lot. They're true role models in the school. And we are so lucky to have their leadership skills already, starting as young people. So thank you again so much. If we could have another round of applause for them. Does anybody else have any questions about that?
Fantastic.
It's a nice program that we have going on in both schools now. So the next thing I have is the REEDS Collaborative. We have two new member districts that we'd like to add. As you know, I'm on the Board of Directors for the REEDS Collaborative. And we took a vote at our last board meeting. And the board, which consists of at least 15 superintendents, voted unanimously to add Brockton Public Schools and Whitman Hansen Regional Public School District to the REEDS Collaborative, as they really do need this as a resource for their most challenging students, like the rest of the member districts have. So I would need a vote from the school committee, as all of the other member districts are doing.
Just a quick question on that. Does that reduce our cost, adding these two schools, or increase it? Any idea?
No. I don't think so.
No. All right. So based on that. On 11/16/2023, there was a vote to allow Brockton Public School District and Whitman Hansen Regional Public School District to join REEDS Collaborative. They are on track to become effective on 7/1/24. May I have a motion to allow both districts to join REEDS Collaborative?
Make that motion.
John Haukraft, motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Melissa Cudera, second. And can we please have a roll call?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Haukraft?
Yes.
Ms. Cudera?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously?
Thank you. Next up, we have our technology update with Mr. Missler. I did speak to Chairperson Downing, and she has suggested that Mr. Missler continue doing his monthly reports, but was wondering if he could just speak maybe every other month. So as long as everybody is fine with that, we're going to start that this month. And then next month, he'll be really focused on the board docs situation anyway. I know that in the past, the school committee had asked for a monthly based on, you know, the transition between the people. But I think we're in a much, much better place at this point in time. Things are very stable. So with that being said, just so you know, he will continue to submit his monthly reports. And he'll speak every other month. Okay?
Good evening, everyone. I have a very infrastructure-heavy update for everyone. So some good news for us. You saw the document we provided. We just procured the new infrastructure for this district this summer. We didn't get the equipment fully in until about September. I'm proud to announce that we are finished with the AES building rollout. We took advantage of the Thanksgiving break where staff was out of that building, so we could turn down that network and turn on our new one. Our infrastructure is rolled out in the FMS building. We just haven't cut over yet. Just this evening, I cut over one closet. So we're a third of the way through this building as well. So we're well ahead of schedule, which we were... our goal was by the end of this summer. So we're ahead of the schedule. So to go over some of the things that we've done and the benefits of it, and some of the things that we've run across. It's a more thoughtful approach. The tech department has installed and configured all the equipment without the need for hiring outside vendors. We've done that all in-house. We've trained our techs, which gives you a little bit more hands-on approach. And of course, saves us a great deal. Improved performance. The equipment upgrades increase our capacity significantly. We migrated from non-enterprise equipment to enterprise equipment. To get a little technical for you, we have 1 gigabit between closets, which was the industry standard way, way, way back when. We're at 50 gigabits per closet now. So essentially, what that means is we can throw whatever comes into education for technology for the next 15 years at this equipment, and you won't need to buy anything else.
Promise?
Promise. Reliability. From July 22 until now, we have four switches completely stopped working since I started here. That gives you an idea of some of the problems that we had. And what that impacts are access points. And every access point that we have roughly has 40 to 50 kiddos on it. That's staff devices. That's our cameras. That's our door access. All that is impacted when we lose a switch. We've had four that completely died out since I've been here. That is no longer the case at AES. All the new equipment is in place. For longevity, this will take care of us in the next 10, 15 years, as mentioned. Cost savings. The new modern equipment is energy-efficient, requires less maintenance, easily scalable, with reduced overall costs per operation. Security with reliable, high-bandwidth network. Because they can process everything so much quicker, we could put things in place, for instance, efficient intrusion detection. We could do better monitoring, better prevention, et cetera. And what's to come? We're looking to finish up the Ford Middle School as soon as we can. And once we cut that over, this entire district will be on high-enterprise level equipment, which is a huge deal for us. So for our next meeting, you'll probably get another update for the Ford Middle School from us. And like I said, we are six-plus months ahead of schedule on that. So that is our great update for this evening. Any questions?
Sarah, I do have one, but...
Go ahead, Ron.
I was just going to ask, Patrick, do you have a way to... when we talk about the cost savings here, will you be able to like quantify what those are moving forward? Estimated?
I can give a rough estimate, sure. Yep, I can come up with something for that just based on what the district has spent in the past for vendors, what we're not. And then versus the energy savings, we could do some stuff like that. So I could provide that.
For our next meeting, is that reasonable?
Sure.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Next, we want to talk about our Panorama Survey fall results. And I'd like to call Mr. Viera to talk about our Sense of Belonging data.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Last year, we presented a very similar presentation on surveying our students for the sense of belonging. And just to review, that it refers to the feeling of being accepted, valued, and connected to the community. And that students, when they have a strong sense of belonging and feel supported, they are more motivated and engaged in their educational journey. And since 2021-22 school year, we had began... we began anonymous surveys to students to get a gauge on the sense of belonging. And we... the first year, we had created our own survey. Last year, we used the Panorama Survey. And again, this year, we are using Panorama surveys. A benefit to the Panorama surveys is that we are able to compare ourselves to national districts nationwide. The Panorama surveys measures on safety mindset, teacher-student relationships, climate, belonging, and engagement. In addition to the surveys, we've been reviewing the data that has come in. Dr. Bailey and I have been meeting with focus groups. We are... we have met with all of the middle school focus groups at this point. For the first focus group meetings of the year, we met with the ambassadors, student ambassadors. Each grade level has roughly 12 ambassadors. There's one ambassador per advisory group. So we were able to meet with one representative from each advisory by grade level 5 through 8. And we have on our schedules meeting times coming up in the near future to meet with the elementary students as well. This ties to the district's strategic initiatives in the area of creating thriving social and emotional learning experiences for all students. So the results, AES grades 3 and 4. So the AES results are pretty kind of flat compared to what we had last year. Not a lot of movement in any which direction. We saw a small, very small drop in a few of the categories. And we saw an increase in school mindset and in school engagement. And compared to nationally, we're ranking in the 80th... generally in the 80th to 99th percentile in most categories. So yeah, we saw the... I kind of just reviewed all of this. But we saw an increase in school mindset and engagement. And just areas for consideration and working on is we saw slight decreases in some of the areas: school belonging, school safety, and school climate. And we know that just overall, there's always room for growth and improvement.
So nothing alarming?
Nothing alarming.
No, I mean, the data at the elementary school, while it was flat, it was still positive and strong. And when you look at the national norms, we're in good shape.
We talk a lot about the national norms, because we say, you know, compared to the national norms, say, in school mindset, yes, we're in the 80th to 99th percentile, but can we do better? And so I think that's where I'm saying there's always room for improvement, room for growth. And while we're performing quite well in most areas, we're always striving. The purpose of giving these surveys is so that we can always have that continuous feedback and make sure that we're always improving.
And it's always followed up with the focus groups. So my meeting. And it's just me, and Mr. Viera is taking notes. So the kids feel pretty comfortable and free to say whatever they want. So that's the rule. While we share some trends, we don't share identifying information that this student said that. So they're very comfortable in what they say, which is fine.
Yes. And the principals then take a lot of this survey data and work... we... the leadership team really dives into this data. The principals work with their school instructional leadership teams and their teacher teams to dig deeper. Because when we look at the data, we're actually able to dig down into the questions and see how students answer questions. So here is a list of just some of the many student-centered events that take place at AES.
And I just want to really emphasize student-centered, because everything we do should be student-centered. All the decisions we make should be student-centered. So that's a focus for the district.
For middle school, we were able to tease out... we're not able to necessarily tease out by grade level, every grade level. But we were able to pull the grade 5 data out just by the way that the surveys made. And we saw a lot of huge jumps in positive feedback from the students in many categories.
And this is from the spring to just the beginning of the year. So I think to see these jumps already, when we know that we're putting a lot more into it this year with advisory, responsive classroom, those types of things, we're expecting it to continuously get better.[1500.06]
But it's a different group of kids though, right? From spring to now?
It's the same kids that take the survey by grade levels. So the sixth graders are now seventh graders, but these are fifth graders. So yeah, but it's still better than the fifth graders from last year.
I was just thinking, because during COVID and everything, everybody still had a negative taste in their mouth. That's why, I'm just thinking, if you're gonna compare apples to apples, they're different kids. So they might have a different mindset and just throwing them out of the elementary school.
Right, so these fifth graders here are not the same fifth graders that we were able to pull out last year. They took, you know, they'll be in the sixth grade data. But in general, I mean, these are really positive changes for the fifth graders coming in. And one way-
Even when you talk to the fifth graders, how's it going? How do you like school? I hear much more positive than I did before.
That was my question, like what, these numbers have jumped so much, like what are we noticing in the halls? What are we noticing in the classroom? Like I don't walk the building, but I mean, you do, you're in the building. What are some of the differences that you see compared to last year? Because last year, we were in a pretty rough shape.
But wait, let's look next year. Take a look at, if you take a look at six to eight, it's gone up considerably.
Why doesn't Mr. Derry's finish and then we can have a discussion, okay?
Yes, so we saw increases also with grades six to eight, positive increases in every category. And some were pretty significant, really. So-
So some of these kids are the same from sixth to seventh grade, you know what I mean?
But they're feeling differently than they did last year.
Correct.
So I'm curious what's going on.
Right.
So yes, we saw increases in all but one category in fifth grade. And we saw increases in all categories for grades six to eight. And the greatest increase was school teacher-student relationships and school climate. And we did see a slight decrease in school mindset for grade five. And we know that there were huge gains. And we also know, I'm just prefacing all of the data with this, that we know there's always room for growth. This is just one example of a day at the middle school. It was during the turkey trot day where students were able to select activities based on interest. So I guess the answer to that question is what's the big change? Is we feel it's the responsive classroom and the advisory period. The principal, Michelle Sylvia, puts together slides daily so that all students are getting the same information in that first 15 minutes of school. And there's a lot of opportunity for students and teachers to get to know each other, build those relationships, but also get everybody on the same page with the same vocabulary about expectations, what's happening, what's coming up in their day. So when you say, you know, what is it looking like in the hallway, when you ask that question, it's looking very different. It's looking very different. Because if there's hotspots or things coming up, they're able to adjust the slides and address that with the advisory classes.
Yeah, I could definitely tell just from numbers, every category went up.
Yes.
That's good to see.
Yeah, you can feel the difference, I would say, which is really great. And that came out in our focus groups also, that the students appreciate that advisory period and that they really do feel now that they have an adult in the building, at least one adult, that they can go to if they need somebody. So the family survey we gave, we have not, this is the first year we've used the panorama to give the family date survey. So any previous family surveys that we had would have been through like a Google survey. So we do not have comparisons from the year before. So family survey pluses, learning recovery, school safety, and family support came in as the top three favorable.
That's a focus group. Those two pictures are actually a focus group that held, what, last week? At the middle school, different grade levels.
Yes, I believe that's a fifth grade focus group. And then we have here an eighth grade focus group. And as far as areas for growth, school climate, school fit, and family engagement. Although the school climate and the school fit, we, you know, we did perform far above that family engagement category. That family engagement category came in at 15%. And that's one area where we really dug deep into the questions. And we're trying to figure out what would lead to a score such as that. One of the questions was, I should have put it up here, but one of the questions was, how often are you coming to school and meeting with your child's teacher in person? And if you answered anything less than once a month, it was considered an unfavorable response. So-
So that doesn't make sense, there aren't a lot of parents heading to one-on-one with teachers.
Right, I mean, that would be a lofty goal, especially for middle school students who have, teachers who have, say, 100 students, to meet with each children, student's parent more than once a month. It would be. So we need to really look at that and say, you know, dig deeper into that data and figure out as a team, we're talking about what are our goals for family engagement? Because we do clearly have room for improvement. But what is it that we're actually aiming for? And we've had families come to the Better Together Summit, we've started that work. We're talking about it on a regular basis with our leadership team.
And we had recently five families, I believe, that joined the team at that summit, which is really nice.
So yeah, we recognize that there's glows and grows. And we look forward to working in collaboration with shareholders to improve on the student and family experience at the Akushna Public Schools. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And this is just a quick update on the AES air quality and deep clean. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page. I just want to acknowledge Mrs. Downing who joined us at 6:00 o'clock, so thank you.
Sorry I'm late.
That's okay. As you know, we had a deep clean at the elementary school over the Thanksgiving break. And the students and the staff had to be out of school for two and a half days. That allowed the ServPro company to clean for eight straight days minus Thanksgiving. But it was a great opportunity to really clean the air ducts, clean everything, the furniture, the floors, the walls. We replaced a couple of sofas, things inside the sofas. So it was quite a bit of work. The following Monday, when the staff and students returned, I went on a walkthrough with the company. And we made a punch list up of anything that was not really up to par for us. And they came back this past Saturday and they got through that punch list. So I have not heard any complaints since. So I feel like, you know, now the challenge is keeping up on the cleanliness. And it's very difficult right now because we're continuously dealing with short staffing issues. So with our custodians. But we also had a parent meeting, which I know a couple of you were able to attend. We had about 50 people there. And they had the opportunity to listen to the experts who did the testing. One expert was from WEA and the other one was from Mac Services. And they were able to listen to them and what the numbers mean. And overall, how even before the deep clean, the building was actually in okay shape. But this was a bonus to get this all completed. Families had the opportunity during that meeting to ask questions. I feel like it was a very positive meeting. And, you know, I actually received a couple of very positive emails after that. So I was just wanting to make sure that the committee was fully updated on that and where we're at with that. And looking forward now, we're trying to be very proactive. We're scheduling the duct work cleaning at the Ford Middle School over the Christmas break. So we're working on that right now. But other than that, it's, you know, keeping up on that. And as you know, this was the short-term solution. And we will continue to work with the steering committee on longer-term solutions. And I'm sure that Mr. McIntyre in his report will talk about some of the engineering firms, the proposals that they're going to have to come in to help us figure out the root cause. And we can address it in that way. But we continue to address it with the steering committee. Mrs. Gomes is on that committee. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't know if I can ask this here, but like the rugs and everything were cleaned and everything's back? And everything that's not back is being replaced or?
Yep, so things, certain things were discarded, thrown away, they're going to be replaced. A few chairs, for example. And then the rugs were actually taken out and cleaned.
Great.
Some were brought back earlier this week. And I'm not sure if we had the second round come back, but they were supposed to be back within the week, so.
I just noticed at conferences that rest of the-
Yeah, and if anything couldn't be cleaned, they were supposed to let us know and we would replace.
Okay, great. Yeah, it looked good, I was in there for conferences, it smelled good.
Oh, good.
It smelled, I walked in.
Yeah.
It's not sick. I talked to some of the teachers, they seemed pretty happy.
Oh, good. Any questions, anybody else?
Paula, just thanks to you and the administration for hosting the parents. I think it was important to give folks the opportunity to come in and understand what was going on and ask questions. So thanks for doing that.
Of course. Great. I want to also give a shout out to our facilities director. We, him and I spent a lot of time together over the Thanksgiving break, monitoring the work during that time off. So he's really put in quite a bit of time to this project. But thank you all. And that is all I have for tonight, so thank you.
No, again, actually, maybe I do. To the parents that came out to that meeting, thank you for putting in the time and effort and asking those important questions because everybody was wondering them, so wondering the answers to those. So much appreciated to that. Also to everybody else that came out in support of the cleaning, ServPro and everybody else, all the cleaning staff and administration, everyone. We put a lot of effort into making this happen. And then in addition to that, I asked from being on the steering committee, if our maintenance director can put some sort of timeline together to see, to keep up with maintenance regarding air ducts and any other major things that need to be done during certain times of the year or every other year or wherever it may be, just so we can, from a budget standpoint, start allocating money and figuring out how to make that all work to make sure that we're not behind the nine ball. Eight ball?
Eight ball?
Eight ball. Again, like we have been presently.
I also just want to mention, one of the things I mentioned at the parent meeting is, there's a lot of miscommunication and confusion. And you know, that's the whole social media thing. So I just want to point out again, it's really important to know that, you know, the social media is not accurate information. And that if people need and want accurate information, they can certainly call the schools at any time. We did have families emailing and calling and getting accurate information. But I think that is helpful if they're really curious to understand that the information on social media is not accurate unless it's coming directly from a school website or a school social media site. So, thank you.
I guess I'll take it from here. Yep, and we are now moving on to our business managers' report. So I'll welcome Patrick McIntyre to the podium.
Good evening, school committee. For those who don't know, I'm back this week from my paternity leave. Just yesterday was my first day back on campus. Thank you, thank you. So I'm getting re-acclimated to all this too. And luckily, you know, I had the fun to come to school committee the second day back, so. I already apologized, I see some errors in some of my math on this form, but I'll cover those as we get through this, so.
Our pleasure, Patrick, to have you here.
Thank you, thank you. Pleasure to be here. So we'll kick it off with the current fiscal budget. You know, again, there's some incorrect numbers on your reports that I'll correct and make sure I get back out to you. But long story short, there's about 70% of the budget left. And there's about 70% of the school year left. And that sort of plays right along with, you know, we don't have, you know, a very, a very big or wide budget. You know, it's all tied to fixed costs. So three months down, 30% of the budget down. Seven months to go, 70% of the budget to go. I mean, it doesn't, you know, match up any better than that. So a lot of these costs are tied to, you know, our high school tuitions, transportation costs, and salaries. So, you know, other than that, pretty par for the course. Mr. Howcroft, I apologize, you requested that I break out the high school costs. I don't have it on this report due to the timing of me getting back in here and getting this together. But I will have that for school committee next meeting. On top of that, you know, it's time to buckle down and look, I mean, we have been looking at the current year budget, but now it's also time to look at fiscal '25's budget and, you know, what's going on in the world and funding and what's going on in our world of Akushna Public Schools. Most recently, we just sent out a small newsletter and I included a survey for the community. And that's not just the community, it's teachers, you know, guardians, students, whoever wants to complete it. I asked you to complete that survey. It helps us, you know, hear your concerns and focus on what you think the needs are. And if it's something that we're not already doing, we can work our budget to sort of address some of those concerns and have those conversations. And if it's something we are already doing, it gives us an opportunity to get the communication out there to address that so it's more apparent on what we're working on. So your participation is encouraged and it's only going to help us, you know, come together and build the best school district we can from a fiscal standpoint.
When were they sent out?
That newsletter just went out Monday. It's a short, you know, five, 10-minute survey, pretty open-ended questions about, you know, you know, here's our district plan, what are your concerns, what have been your concerns? And what are suggestions on how to address this? We've had some results already, but I'd like, you know, I'd like more, I'd like as many as we can get, so. And any questions on that, you know, you can always reach out to my office and I'll pick up the phone and have the conversation too. Questions on the budget or the budget process? Otherwise, what I didn't say is meetings are happening everywhere, you know, internally, setting up meetings with the town administrator, with the finance committee, the subcommittees. You know, everything's a full go at this point, so it's exciting. Facilities, I'm not going to repeat everything that Paula said, but we had our deep clean. Everything went well, as far as I know, again, I wasn't here. But, you know, we put a lot of work into getting that scheduled and in place and not having to, you know, close school too long and relocate. And I think, you know, it was a win-win for everybody. So I was happy to hear about the success of that. And, you know, we're still tying up loose ends, but we're in great shape. It doesn't stop there, as Sarah alluded to, Mrs. Gomes alluded to. We are putting together a plan to sort of make sure we don't miss any routine maintenance moving forward. We're putting together, you know, better documentation on our custodial responsibilities, who works in what area, what their expectations are. You know, it just takes a little more focus and concentration. And we're going to build that out and continue to improve. We talk about equity all the time, you know, we did some cleaning over there, we're going to do some cleaning over here. We have some duct work cleaning to do here, we have some minor construction to do over here. We're going to take care of that hopefully Christmas break. We're still procuring some of it, but we think we can act on that fast. Some fun stuff, again, with the contract with Akushna Fairhaven Youth Basketball League. We're splitting the cost to refinish the gymnasium's floors in both schools. So that's going to be conducted over Christmas break. You know, those gym floors get good use between our classes and the basketball league. So everyone appreciates that and we're taking care of those things. And we already got our quotes back for our bleacher project over at AES that we hope to solidify and aim for April vacation, have those conducted and completed. So we're excited about that, you know, thank you again to PJ Keating. They cover about 98% of the cost, so we can scrounge up the difference. But we're excited to get that in, in that gymnasium. And again, you know, equity, now we have two great gyms matching and the community has, you know, the privilege to utilize it with us. So that's awesome. Helping out with food services, you know, everything's sort of status quo as far as meal counts go, participation. We're still hanging around the 35% range for free and reduced lunch. You know, numbers are up versus last year and they trend to stay the same month after month. You know, it depends on days served. You can see slight decreases from November to October, but it's really, we served 19 days of meals in November versus 21 in October. And then a few days of AES that we had closed impact these numbers as well. But the participation's there and that's, you know, that's one of our goals. We want participation because it improves the students in the classroom. We had our fun little Thanksgiving meal that I missed out on, but that was a big hit. You know, the scratch butternut squash and the scratch cranberry sauce. And the feedback that I heard was everyone loved it and had a good time. So again, we're trending in the right direction, a lot's going on. But we're making small progress in all these different departments that I'm very satisfied with. Something I've mentioned a few times was the community eligibility provision. They've been flushing us through the state budget and the federal budget to figure out what they were going to do to, you know, ensure these universal free lunches. So what they did end up voting in the supplemental budget was to decrease the CEP percentage from 40 to 25%. And they're mandating any school that hits that threshold to enroll in CEP. So we hit that threshold, we're about the 35% neighborhood of free and reduced. So we are mandated to enter into this provision. It doesn't really change anything, lunches are still going to be free, breakfast is still free. The, you know, the bottom line of it is, we get fixed into a certain rate that we're reimbursed on. So we report based on our average of free and reduced from September to April 1. And we take those April 1 numbers and we say, okay, we're 37% free and reduced for the rest of the year and for the next four full years, it encompasses four years really. You will be reimbursed at 37% free and reduced, 63% paid. There's different reimbursements for paid versus free and reduced, but it all ends up averaging out. We're able to analyze that figure every April 1 in case, hey, this year we were 37%, but unfortunately something happened in the economy and now we're 50%. Well, we damn well want to get reimbursed at that 50% free and reduced rate so we can reset our base. I'm familiar with it, I've done it in the past. It'll be interesting, again, just to crunch numbers of what-ifs, you know, now that we're CEP because we're forced into it versus what if we weren't, what was the difference? And we will probably do a little of that analysis. But right now, again, we're sort of, our hands are tied and we're forced into this. We got a little more guidance on it today during my professional development trainings with Masbo. And it's sort of a formality that, you know, school committees should be voting on this, from what I understand. They didn't give me a straight answer on it because, again, it's being mandated. So even if you voted no, we still have to do it. So I'm going to get some more clarification on that. We might have to come back in January to vote as a formality to adopt CEP for both FMS and ADS. So to be continued on that one. I tried, but I didn't get great answers. As far as the inventory project goes, I know we've been talking about this for a few times, a few meetings, but we have almost all the numbers there for replacement costs. We're waiting a vendor that has a good chunk of what we were looking for to give us some figures. But meanwhile, we are beginning to plan to spend. We've procured some items that are deteriorating or failing us right now that we need to replace now. And we're going to have that spending plan in place and we're going to have that scheduled over to you all. Hopefully sooner than later, we'll keep badgering the vendor or we'll try someone else. And then transportation, transportation's been going okay. I do think it's important to make the school committee aware that there was a bus accident while I was out. A bus with just a few students on it hit a parked vehicle, no one was hurt. It was reported back to us. We've been working with the bus company to make sure that this driver, you know, handled the situation properly. But more so is unfortunately removed from the district of driving our students. They've had some other complaints. So we are in that process because safety and security, you know, whether in our buildings or on our school buses are a priority. We found that as an action necessary to take. So that's about it. Any questions on food services or facilities or transportation?
Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ding, is that Ron raising your hand? You look good over there on the computer.
Ron, you have a question?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Get out of here before I start asking.
All right, thank you.
And anytime you want to share pictures of your new little one.
I'll have all four running around. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Okay, so moving right along, I welcome school committee members, if you have any reports for the public, to share them now.
Not this evening.
Not this evening?
No, we're quiet tonight, John.
All right, Ron, anything to report on your end?
No reports.
Okay, so we have a number of communications that are noted there that you can read when you have some time. you have some time, so please take note of those. And if there isn't anything further, it looks like we're already at the end of our agenda. So if I could request a motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
All right, and second? Okay. Any further discussion? No, we'll take a roll call. Vote to close our meeting. Mrs. Downing? Yes. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Howcroft?
Yes.
And Ms. Fudda?
Yes.
Okay, and our, yes, and just noting our next, when our next school committee meeting is, so Tuesday, January 9th, here in the Ford Middle School library at 5:30 PM. So happy holidays, everyone.